Welcome to the July 12, 2018 meeting of the Green Bay planning commission. First item on the agenda, roll call. Timothy Gilbert, Chair.
Present.
Sidney Bremmer, Vice Chair.
Present.
Alder Veronica Corpus Dax.
Present.
Lisa Hansen.
Present.
Jacob Miller.
Present.
Ganda Protowski.
Present.
Jerry Wazbisky.
Present.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda for the July 12 meeting. mature and entertaining motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Regular business, item one. Consideration and possible action on a request to create a planned unit development in the 200 block of North Van Buren Street submitted by Garrett R. Bader, GB Real Estate Investments.
Mr. Chair, this is a request to create a planned unit development for a four-unit development along the 200 block of North Van Buren. So, some properties highlighted in red here at Van Buren Street running north and south, Cherry Street east and west. This is just behind the Whitney School development that we talked about a few months ago. In this particular area, there's a variety of land uses going on. There's a bridal church on the corner. There is an office building to the south. And there's a mixture of single and two-family uses as well, some apartment buildings up along Heinz Street. CVS is to the north, Whitney School. City's comprehensive plan recommends medium intensity retail office or housing. This seems to still consist with that. The current zoning is office residential as well as the immediate area. There is some commercial areas up along Main Street, of course, but this area is office residential. The proposal is to create two, two-unit semi-detached dwellings. There's one called townhomes, but they're four units total. So, this is a site plan showing Cherry Street, Van Buren. There are currently four lots already that are in this area. They're rather small and strange, I guess, basically. They're going to be reconfigured into four new lots and create these boundaries here for the two units here and two units there. As far as setbacks, these units are setback off of Van Buren Street about three and a half feet or so. There's a setback off Cherry Street of about 11 feet, kind of keeping it at the homes along the north side of Cherry. And there's a 20-foot setback separating this development from the single-family home adjacent. There are also townhomes going on. It's part of the Whitney School development. These are kind of compatible as far as setbacks and general placement. This was not included in your package, but I just want to pass this along. These are the elevations for the two units. On the right-hand side is the front of the building. You can kind of see this common wall of the share of one unit and second unit. Left-hand side is the back of the, or the west side of the structure. They have two storey garages and decks above. These have full basements. These are very similar to other townhomes that were built in the neighborhood by the same applicant. This is a perspective view from Cherry Street, showing that side view. So, this is a planned unit development. Our staff did prepare a draft PUD that is attached within your agenda. If you have questions, I can address those one by one. But we did notify property owners within 200 feet. We received one or two inquiries, but no objections to the request. And we're recommending approval of the request subject to the PUD that's attached within the agenda.
Paul just managed to answer my two questions.
Good.
So, are you redrawing the lot lines? Or is it going to be all owned by one person?
Right. So, this is the current configuration. There's one lot here. There's three smaller ones that will be reconfigured into four individual lots. So, those are individual units.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chairman? Are we allowed to speak yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
I've moved to open the floor.
I had a question. Each one of those units, is that whole complex going to be owned by one person?
Individual ownership.
It'll be individual ownership, but multiple residents in each building?
No. Single-family uses for those.
They're all single-family.
Right. They have to share a common wall in each building.
They share a common wall, and they have up and down in the garage.
Two and a half stories in height, full basements.
Okay. So, it's pretty similar to what's going to be in that new complex by Whitney School and then down the street further.
Slightly different, but similar. Yeah. The other ones across the street have like a shed roof on them. The other ones north, behind the CVS, have a flat roof. Generally speaking, they're very similar.
Okay. Thank you.
And one question that I found in my notes that I could remember to ask. Is stormwater management plan applicable in this case? The PUD draft says if applicable, there'll be one required.
I'm not sure. These are probably treated as single-family units, but yet they might be treated as a cluster.
Cluster.
So, it may apply. We haven't got that far with our engineers yet, so unless Jared can speak to that, I don't know if he's looked at that yet or not, but we just put that in just in case there's a requirement.
Okay. So, more research to be done?
More homework to do, yes.
Okay.
Motion, open this floor. We have a motion in a second to open the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As you come up to the podium, would you please give your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Gary Withered. I'm the attorney for Lawrence Mancheski. And the reason we're here this evening, if you click back to one of the earlier, Lawrence is the owner since 1980 of this apartment building and also the properties over here. And he's here tonight to object, in a sense, and I'll explain. Lawrence needs parking for his structure. And a number of years ago, he approached the city regarding buying either this piece or a portion of this piece so that he could create additional parking for his apartment building. He was told at that time that it's not for sale. He also, at one time, you saw a for-sale sign out there, didn't you, Lawrence?
Yes, I did.
And called and were told it wasn't for sale and then the sign came down.
Called somebody up. My son actually did.
Okay, all right.
Nixon days, say on side one, don't.
And the ownership, this is owned by the Green Bay Development Authority, and so is this corner piece. And then these two are privately owned. What Lawrence would like to do is purchase this portion of the property. The development that is here could still continue. This piece is 53, 52 and a half feet by 37 and a half feet, this little square up in this corner. And that way, he could create four or five additional parcels. Yes, this is a garage. Yes, a portion of the garage would have to be removed to create the access. But he, he's been a longtime owner. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the property. I took it, I haven't gone past it for a while, so I went out this afternoon, took a ride, a ride past. It's a very nice building that he has there. I mean, it really has a, kind of a neat look around that park area, and he needs some help. So, he's been a 37, 38-year owner and taxpayer. And yes, this is a nice, new development, but if in the course of doing something new, if you can help out and improve something old, that's what we're asking for. Don't oppose what's going on here, but do not believe this is needed for what is being proposed. It could easily be carved off, attached to this parcel, and help Lawrence out with some additional parking. That's where we're at on it. And I'll field any question. Lawrence has been a client for 20 years?
Yeah, about that, at least.
And he called me yesterday afternoon. You know, lawyers love those calls, you know, and say, "Hey, Gary, can you help me out on this thing?" So, he said, "Well, let me see what I can do." And I have to say, Paul was very helpful as far as getting me some information and some maps and the staff report and that kind of thing. And I thought, well, jeez, I looked at the standards for a PUD. And again, we're really not coming in to object to it, but I think it can still happen. You have one of those other colored ones. Yeah, there it is. You can still do all of this, but sell to Lawrence that. That's what we're asking for. So, if that goes down as opposition, so be it, but it's kind of a in-betweener on that. No, we don't oppose, but help us out here also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul, the subject property, who contains ownership of that? Is it the city that owns that technical?
So, those parcels, the two parcels, I think that you're referring to, 827 and 829 Cherry Street. I don't know if I can go back to the...
Sure.
Yeah, 827 and 829 Cherry Street. Those are parcels that are owned by the redevelopment authority. In March of this past year, the redevelopment authority granted Mr. Bader a planning option to explore the feasibility of doing some townhomes on that. And so, that planning option was granted and ultimately resulted in this development that's moved forward here. The redevelopment authority last month looked at a term sheet with Mr. Bader for potential TIF assistance for building these properties. That's signed through a development agreement based on what happens here today. In terms of the planning option with Mr. Bader, that, believe that was done, and through the redevelopment authority, they look at options for, okay, as you sell property, what's the highest and best use for development? I'm not sure when Mr. Mancheski or his attorney or individual called the office, who they spoke with. I'm guessing, though, at the time, given that piece, that Mr. Bader was looking at this in terms of the timing, had moved down the road in terms of exploring this option. And I think in terms of, again, the redevelopment authority, we went through this, I think, with that parcel on VELP that the city owns, you know, we're looking for the highest and best use and what's going to create tax increment on there. And in this case, a housing option would be preferential in terms of parking. With that, I know Mr. Mancheski, I think, has talked to Mr. Bader about potentially having room for some parking. I think as Mr. Bader looks at potentially expanding the scope of this project, there may be some opportunity to have some joint use or shared use. And we talked about, all right, maybe coming back to increase the impervious coverage. We didn't do it at this point because I think we don't, one, know if that's going to happen, and two, we don't know quite where the stormwater management is going to fall. But there is an option available for the future. Just going back to, the redevelopment authority felt that this was the best option for that parcel. And so, they're the ones who move forward with that piece.
So, the business before us is to consider and possibly act on the request to create the PUD for this parcel. The question put forth by the gentleman isn't part of the agenda item?
Sure. I mean, it would be within planning commission's jurisdiction to dictate lopping off property at this point. That would have to go back to the redevelopment authority.
Say that last again, Kevin.
It would be up to the redevelopment authority if they were to look at lopping off a piece of that property for development. It wouldn't be the guy at the planning commission to be doing this.
So, we would need to move this back to that?
Correct. With that, the, Mr. Bader has a planning option on that property. It was granted in March, and it was a six-month planning option. So, it would have to go back, and then we wouldn't be able to do anything with it until September. You know, I think in terms of, from the redevelopment authority perspective, I think the opportunity, you know, to move forward with this project was why we wanted to grant that option and leave it up to then the private parties to work out an agreement, come down the road versus the city taking a piece off now and then restricting our ability, or at least RDA's ability, to develop it.
As a point of clarification, if I may, Lawrence has not spoken with Mr. Bader about trying to do something. I mean, as explained, it just dropped on my desk a little more than 24 hours ago. You got to do what you got to do quickly and get in and say, "Well, let's not go too far before we've had a chance to at least have that kind of discussion with him." And we're not here to delay or disrupt. That's not our point. I think that's pretty clear, and I'm not coming in to pounding another table. But it just, this hit you, and all of a sudden, boom, whoa, wait a minute here.
Understood.
Understood.
Does Mr. Bader have a rap here? Would you be able to answer a few questions?
Yeah, I'd love to. Yeah, I was just waiting, letting you get through that, and then I'll raise my hand and see if there's anything I can help with.
Is it appropriate for me to ask a question?
If you would come up to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I got to run it at six very good. Kevin, you got to remind them of their authority here.
Right.
Zone. Land sales, different department. Don't overreach here. I think, I get it, but again, I just want to remind them.
The two are connected, though.
Okay.
You've got two horses on there pulling the wagon.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jared Schmidt with Robert E. Lean Associates, 1250 Centennial Center Boulevard. As Garrett had left a note for you folks, he unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but had asked to come and speak on his behalf and, you know, answer any questions that may exist. So, you know, if you'd like any more explanation about the plan or things going forward, I'll be happy to answer as the best I can.
Just a couple of questions. Again, I need to disclose that I do live in the first, one of the, the second phase of this development in the Whitney Townhomes, just north of there, and Garrett's one of my neighbors. So, just to put that on the record. Do you know how far along in the process Garrett is with this development?
So, as we said today, this is kind of a big step to move forward. The PUD helps set some of the guidelines for the development plan to be allowed to be submitted to the city for site plan review, working the stormwater details. The desire is to break ground on this within, let's say, the next 60 days or so. In order to do so, we have a certified survey map that has to get prepared and filed, that has a 40-day review period at the, at the city level. Site plan review could be in that, you know, let's say, 20 to 30 to 40-day review timeline. So, given that, tomorrow, we're going to finish the CSM. The next day, we would submit it and get that timeline started. So, today's a really important day for the process. I know waiting to September would be very challenging. It would probably cost us this construction season. So, from a PUD standpoint, this is a major step in setting forth those guidelines, specifically setbacks, allowing the zero-lot with the, with the common ownership, so.
Are you aware or able to disclose whether he has any purchasers already lined up for these properties?
I can't speak to that. I know that there's been significant interest. I know he fields calls regularly because of what has happened adjacent. But as far as firm sales, I think until it gets a little bit farther in the process, I don't even know that he can entertain accepting offers. Maybe he's got, you know, verbal confirmation, but I don't know that for certain.
I've spoken with him, and I believe he has two, again, kind of contingent upon things. And again, I mean, it's agreement only so much as, you know, what you can offer because you need to go through the process to do that. But just trying to use some emails that he is, my knowledge is true.
That number's consistent with what he told me. I just, nothing can be installed yet.
Correct.
So, is that green space necessary for this development as far as percentage? Does that even apply in this situation?
As far as percentage green space, we exceed the minimum suggested within the PUD. It's set at 65% hard surface or 35% green, or about 50/50 in this ratio. You know, and I think in a perfect world, and in Garrett's mind, he always looks at the bigger picture, is that, you know, this would be a continuous development and maybe mirror what happened on the other one. Obviously, there's a lot of private parties that own property in the area, so can he dictate that? He can't. But in the event that, you know, things work out, I think he would love to expand it. You know, it's been a, it's been a successful redevelopment of the area. And like I said, the way he thinks, you know, the hope would be to expand, extend it. And if that would happen, that land becomes very valuable for, for his objective. But I also know that he has talked that there was the discussion of the parking and, you know, depending on what that next step looks like, that, you know, he would be open to that because it may be more than what he needs. You know, as you can see, there's, there's, the space here is 20 feet of green space. Within the PUD, that's a requirement, a 20-foot setback for a buildable area, which would be pavement or a structure. You know, if that was reduced or as this development moved, maybe the building's dimensions or sizes change, and that would allow for more space for parking for adjacent owners. But I think until we get to that point, there, there would be risk of just lopping off that end because that would all but stop the development in the short term, in the long, in the immediate term.
My next question, is he looking to buy the other? Because I know he owns one on Heinz, two. Okay. Can I ask you a question?
Related to this, a similar kind of issue about planning ahead. When the RDA gave him the planning option, did they indicate or did he feel he was acting on that planning option in thinking about going beyond these four?
I don't know that I can, I would imagine, but I'm not certain. Kevin, you may have a better opinion of that.
Yep. And when I, I was just pulling up some of the meeting minutes, I think one of the things that he had discussed was, like, the block to the north, you know, looking at the bigger picture, the, the planning option at that time, you know, the RDA owned two parcels. So, in terms of him assembling properties, you know, we were involved because of those two. I think he feels he's at a point right now that he has a sufficient mass assembled in order to move forward with a project that's cost-effective. But I think, you know, he's made it clear that, you know, he would like to assemble additional properties to continue this development, but he's reached a threshold right now where he can move forward, you know, financially and logistically with a piece of it.
And RDA ownership involves one additional property?
So, RDA owns, as I go, if you go back to that other slide, RDA owns, you can show up there, it's the long grass lot and then the tiny little lot at the corner. Those are the two ones owned by the...
That's the only two in this block, if I recall.
So, we're not talking about additional RDA ownership in that block?
I believe Garrett owns the corner.
The second one?
Yeah. Yep. And so, the, you know, going back to the discussion with, you know, RDA, you know, I think when asking for that planning option, yeah, it was discussed in terms of what could be done long-term in terms of that types of development. I think where RDA was at, we had also been discussing the Whitney School project, you know, the townhomes that were part of that, you know, feeling, again, as we turn over property or sell property, seeking to get higher and better uses out of it, and, you know, there's a limited amount of tax base, or a limited amount of property to get tax based on the city. And the RDA felt that this was a good option for moving forward, and that's, that's why it was granted.
Thank you.
May I ask him a call?
I have a question.
One day. Is the rectangular piece up in the corner that I pointed out, is that needed for this development, or is that a just-in-case piece if he plans to go north? He need that 57, 53 by 37-foot square rectangle, excuse me, to do what he wants to do here?
I guess, as we said today, I can't say definitively yes or no. I mean, obviously, the, the hard surface, the building doesn't project into that area. So, from, to create these four units, no. A question was brought up about stormwater. Our belief is based on the size of this phase in this development that by the code, it's not required. However, our first process is always to talk with EPW and determine whether that's something that they want to include. If that's the case, that area may be used for that. There's also some, you know, other environmental considerations that we have to take into on the site and make sure that we're responsible of building removals and things like that.
But as we sit here right now, I mean, I did a little arithmetic, I read the code, and I saw what you need for green space and percentages and whatnot, and I figured out how many square feet are there and how many square feet are in that, that rectangle that I'm referring to. You know, moving away from the what-if, based on what you know right now, do you need that rectangle to do the project?
I believe I stay, staying with my answer. I mean, it, there's components of this that are still unknown. We're in the initial planning stages, and unless, you know, you can answer the question of, do we need stormwater or not? Do we need these things? I can't give you a yes or no, and I'm not, I don't think I'm in a position that I need to do that because we just don't know yet. You know, the question at hand is the PUD and the terms of that, and I think that's where we sit. So, you know, unfortunately, I just, I don't, I don't feel that I'm in a position to answer that question.
I have a question.
Mr. Chairman, Wazbisky, did you have a question?
I would like to repeat a little bit of history out of this particular meeting I have tonight. We are not here to make that judgment call. We are here to either approve or disapprove this development as it stands. I'm a little bit disturbed that people haven't spoken up sooner than this about this, and this should have been in here, but it's not. And it's not up to us to judge it right now. I can very well see how he's developed his other properties, and he already has taken over other buildings in that property and moved on up and around the corner and everything else, and did expand. And I can very well see with the RDA surrounding this, in my opinion, looks to me like it's a given fact. I'm sure he probably would continue that way, but I can't make that call, but we're not here to make that call, okay? We're here to judge what is before us, and it's not up to us to even discuss it as far as I'm concerned. I do have one question, though, for the gentleman here. Where, why don't you have that parking requirement now the way it stands? What's changing over there? Where do you park now? Oh, there is parking. And that has nothing to do with this either, but I'm just curious.
We rent. They rent spots, and rather than renting, they'd rather own it. And also, when the tenants have builders, street parking becomes an issue. Any of you, my office building is a block from this, and I watch my fellow neighbors that are rental properties, parking's always an issue. Heck, I got, I got a gentleman's agreement with the landlord of the property next to me, that your tenants can park in my parking lot, just use those two stalls and don't get in the way, because it's an issue. Lawrence has got the same problem, and it's, it's not unique to him down in this area.
Well, I, like you say, I'm going to get back to the point that this has nothing to do with what we're doing here tonight. I do have a suggestion, though. Why don't you approach the Whitney people to see if, the developer, to see if he could provide that capability for you? This is not the place to come and ask for that. We have to stick to our agenda, and we are here for a special meeting tonight. We weren't, we weren't supposed to have a scheduled meeting because of the critical of us of moving ahead with this right now.
I appreciate that. Again, I told you, we're not here to instruct, but, you know, when you learn something, you got to react once you learn. This is when we learned, and so we react.
Send the body to launch that. It could be the RDA.
If I may on one thing, to my understanding, Garrett did talk to, I believe it's your daughter, is it Cindy Helens? Is that your daughter, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Garrett did talk with her prior to this meeting. So, just so that you know, he has had that discussion.
Like today?
I know when I talked to him, it would have been over, it must have been over a week ago.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
That big white spot there, that light, is that going to be a highway narrow line?
This area?
Yeah.
That's the driveway.
That's the driveway.
There's, there's garages up there.
But if you look at the streets, they're, they're pretty narrow, and that's a wide area, isn't it?
It's 20 feet.
Looks bigger than that to me.
Sure.
What's the size of that lot?
The width of the lot?
Oh, the, the top there, it's 52 something.
Here.
That white spot looks like it's over half of that.
It's, for what it's worth, it's 20 feet, and then this section is 20 feet. I think there's maybe four and a quarter or so left there after, but...
If you compare, sir, if you compare that alley there to the east or west there, that's 15 feet.
Sure.
Now, you compare that size on the photo to, to make a highway, white spot there... Now, you compare that size on the photo to the, to make a highway, white spot there, why is it so big?
So people, people can get in and out of their garages?
That big of an area?
Yes.
Sure, yeah.
Can I just ask one question? I've, I've been in the title business, so my question is, is that what the CSM is going to look like, one, two, three, four lots?
Correct.
That's, the question is, why would number four have to be, can't they be all alike so Mr. Mancheski could purchase that square? That's just my question. They all seem to be like that?
Again, at this point, I think the, the question at hand is the PUD.
Right, that's, that's
That's that question. That's what I'm thinking, because otherwise
Ma'am, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Pardon?
Could you give your name and address?
Sure, I'm Subalinski, and I live at three-seventy-two Candy Street in Alhambra.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for the speaker? Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, and if there's any other questions about building appearance or anything, we can answer those as well.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak that hasn't spoken yet?
Do you want to close the floor? Second?
We have a motion and a second to close the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any further discussions? Yes, Mr. Commissioner.
I just want to register my appreciation for you all coming forward and for coming up with an alternative that would allow what looks like the current plan to proceed. But unfortunately, this is not a matter simply of a piece of land having been turned out for sale. It's a matter of the redevelopment authority having requested a plan that was both short-term and long-term from Mr. Bader. And I think apart from whatever you might be able to work out with the RDA or with Mr. Bader himself, we do have to, to look at this, and it looks to me as if it is very fitting to what has been happening in this part of the city. So I will support the recommendation of the staff.
Yes, Commissioner, Mr. Mancheski.
At this point in time, I think we should do, as we have been charged, I see nothing wrong with this project. I would make the motion to continue this improvement.
Do you have any motion?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve this recommendation. Any further discussion?
I just intend, intend, intend to support it as well. I, as I said, I live in one of the other Whitney Town Homes. Those townhomes have completely changed the character of the neighborhood for the better. In addition, and I'm familiar with the apartment thing. It is, it's a really good apartment building. The tents there are happy. They like the apartment. It's good for the neighborhood as well. So it's certainly no knock on, on the existing properties, but some of the properties that he removed were really a blight to the neighborhood. In addition to that, and the fact that he lives on the property, and the builder he's brought in to not only build these but build the prior, their office is three blocks away from the area. He's really focusing on using downtown people to improve downtown and create a niche that frankly doesn't exist much in this part of the city. That's higher-end new builds. You can find higher-end properties downtown and find new builds outside of downtown, but you can't find them both together. And I think it's really good for attracting in professionals downtown, so I'm a hundred percent in favor of this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, are we done? We have a motion and a second to approve this recommendation. All those in favor, take them five minutes, say a nine.
Aye.
Opposed? Recommendation passes. Next item?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Are we done? All those in favor, take them five minutes, say a nine.
Aye.
Opposed? You're adjourned.
Thanks for hearing us out.